Welcome to the Public Safety Committee meeting. Today is July the 23rd. The time is 6:01 and this meeting is being recorded by Zoom. We have Councilor Derby and Councilor Rothschild and we have the City Planner, Mr. Beck. Though we don't have any from the public, I mean, we have Jeff. If you want to say something as a member of the public.
No.
Then there's no. We don't have any agenda to approve at this time. So let's start with the new businesses because I'm pretty sure Jeff have to go to another meeting. Let's start with that. Jeff, can you please explain to the committee what is happening with that grant?
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, I could share more information if it's useful. I have the, I have some stuff ready if we want to share a screen. But there was information in the City Council's packet for July 1st. And I appreciate, you know, being on the agenda for, you know, I'm trying to do the best I can to keep the process moving forward. But as of today, we still haven't heard about the grant, whether we got it or not. Mass DOT did come back to us with two questions. And we think that we're going to hear back tomorrow or Monday as to whether we get either, well, anything, some of what we asked for or all of it. So, you know, we, this grant popped up like at the very, like the middle of June as an opportunity to look at outdoor dining opportunities or increasing activity outside. So Safe Routes to Schools was listed and just enhancing kind of like pedestrian access and pedestrian safety. So, you know, I do want to just say that we did, you know, we've had, I've had some conversations with business owners. And there was a separate conversation happening at the EDIC about the idea of closing streets and cutting out parking spaces and building parklets and all this stuff. And we didn't get a lot of traction on that, at least initially. So we looked at a couple of our plans that we have in place and pedestrian safety and bicycle access kind of rose to the top. So we put together kind of an aggressive application that would put a crosswalk at the end of the boardwalk at National Sonic Pond right now. If you're going up Williston Ave, it just ends. And so our proposal would be to continue the sidewalk to the cemetery and build a crosswalk over to 50 Payson. That's been identified in a couple of plans. And then related to that, we applied to create a temporary bike lane that would go, if you're going up Williston Ave, it would go on the left side along the cemetery.
Let's give me Jeff. I, I set the co-host for you in case you want to share something with us.
Yep, thank you, okay. And the temporary bike lane is really the matter that interacts with this committee. And I can go into some detail. And then there would be finally a crosswalk at the top of Williston Ave to cut over to the high school. So we, we tried to position that as increasing, you know, pedestrian and bicycle access to the high school. And then finally, like the, it's, this is broken into three parts. And then finally, behind the high school, there's a small paved path that just ends right at Daley Field. And so part of the project would continue that paved path from the back of the high school to Nanatac. So, you know, in one sweep, we could, we could bring a bicyclist from the downtown all the way to the high school and Nanatac. And the safety of pedestrians crossing at the boardwalk. So that's kind of like three parts of one project. And then we also applied for funding to build a new crosswalk on Pleasant Street. So it's located kind of going towards the Mass Works project. And the sidewalk just dead ends. And then it forces people to cross Pleasant. So we proposed a bump out. So just like on Cottage Street, the sidewalk would come out and it puts the pedestrian out in, in front of cars that are parked. So it's a, it's definitely like a safety improvement. We, my best guess is that we're not going to get everything that we applied for. But what this group, you know, what, what I'm looking for from this group is some support on the idea of a temporary parking ban on Williston Ave. So, so right now, cars could park on Williston Ave all the way from Lake, Lake Street up all the way to the, to Nanatac, basically. And what we're looking for is potentially a temporary parking ban from Lake Street up to the high school. The, the thing is that I don't know, like, we don't need the temporary parking ban if we don't get the, the funding for the temporary bike lane. So I've been talking to Omar and it's a little bit of a chicken and egg right now. But I'll, I'll show up a quick graphic and then I think what we're, what we had talked about, what Omar and I had talked about, hold on, I can't. I'm learning really fast that I can't, can't do two things at once. The ideal scenario would be if this, if this committee would be willing to hold one more meeting before August 19th. So August 19th is the city council meeting that ideally, if we have the funding, we would like to ask city council to vote on the temporary parking ban on August 19th. But because we're in this chicken and egg situation, I would, I would like to ask this committee if they're willing to hold another meeting before that where we would invite residents of Williston Ave to, to come to the Zoom meeting and talk through any questions or issues that they might have. And I did provide Omar with a draft letter, but it, we didn't send it because there's no point.
No, if it's not the issue.
Exactly. If we're not awarded the funding, then we don't, it's just kind of a moot point. But like I said, I think we, we might know tomorrow or we might know on Monday. So that's really the big request at this point would be whether you're willing to kind of.
A question, Jeff.
Go ahead, please.
Are we sure that we're going to get the answer tomorrow or by next week? Or is it just that, were they coming back? Is there another question for you guys? We'll take it another week.
No, we think, um, we think, we've had some contact with Mass DOT. So what they told us is that they, we answered their questions. And their question was really, can the projects be funded individually? So to me, that's a hint that they may not be able to fund them all. We said, yes, we can, we built it so each one is their own project. But the Williston Ave one works as a, as a system. So they said to us that they have everything we need and we should expect an answer by Friday or Monday. So I'm, I'm pretty confident at this point now that we should know yea or nay on Monday at least.
Can you, Jeff, can you email me this just as a separate, I have it with the other agenda, but just so I can put it to this agenda, like attach it to this minute?
Absolutely. Yep, I can definitely do that. What I was going to show, if you, I don't know if this is necessary or not to show the, to just remind the group. So in the July 1st packet, you know, this is a cooperative project with Planning DPW and Parks and Rec because of the connection to Nanatac. There's narrative here and estimates. But, you know, I did spend some time putting together some graphics to help kind of illustrate. I do find that people really do well with illustrations. See, it's not zooming out. So, you know, we put together the Williston Ave Pedestrian Safety Improvement. So this is that, on the right side here, this, this sidewalk just ends. And we really think it would be a benefit to build an ADA ramp and a crosswalk there to enhance pedestrians. And then what we tried to do is make it kind of comprehensive. The low, the image on the lower left is kind of an example of what other communities have done. It involves no actual construction. It would be painting, like you have to blackout the existing lines on Williston Ave and kind of shift everything around a little bit. And then we would install these temporary columns to just give some visual barrier. It's not, you know, I want to be clear, it's not a safety barrier for bicyclists. But the planning, you know, in the planning world and even in the Mass DOT criteria, they gave credit. They acknowledged temporary projects that could move to permanent. And, and we do think that as a trial run, this would be really important to try it out and see how it goes. And it could become, you know, it could become permanent. And then the image on the right just shows, you know, it's the image I took just kind of driving. We picked the cemetery side because it's almost uninterrupted. There's only one, there's one entrance to the cemetery. So it gives really good bicycle access along that side. And so to do that, we would want to temporarily ban on-street parking. So just, just for your awareness, you know, I, I drive that road every day. And what, from my observation, it's very anecdotal, but I, there's one house. There's one homeowner that parks their car on Williston Ave occasionally. So we, we wanted to.
Is that the red one, the red car?
There's a brick house, yes. Is that what you said?
No, it's a red car all the time there in Williston Avenue.
Yeah.
Most of the time I walk in the afternoon and I see that too, like it's one car all the time parked on the street.
Yeah. So I don't know, I've not, we don't know what their concerns would be, but that would be the idea, the next step would be to host the meeting. We'd furnish them a letter with the Zoom information and ask them to come and, and talk about any questions or concerns. And then I think the important part is it would be temporary. So what I would expect is we could run this. The last, the Mass DOT wanted fast projects, so stuff that could be implemented fast. Even the construction they want done by October, which is like super aggressive. But the temporary bike lane, my goal, if we get the funding and can have the meeting on August 19th, is that we could get this up and running for the school year. So at the first day of high, first day of kids going back to high school would be in place. And then it would run to like the first snowfall, you know, and then we would take it out. That's the part I have not gotten past the winter. Ideally, we would be able to implement this again in the spring and keep it next summer, but I, we haven't figured that part out yet. So I'll be honest.
Okay. Any question from any of the counselors to Jeff?
It sounds perfectly reasonable for us to be able to meet again, depending on like the outcome. So I'm, I'm game.
Okay.
Fine with me.
Do you have any?
What was that, Jeff?
I was just going to ask, I mean, do you have any questions? Like, are there any questions that come to your mind in terms of the temporary parking ban?
I do not have anyone.
I don't have any. And I mean, I am on Williston Ave a lot also and don't see it as a highly parked place.
Right.
It feels like the value add in terms of the number of people who would benefit from this versus the amount of cars that wouldn't be able to park.
Yeah.
Would, would be, you know, definitely weighted on the side of giving more access to bicyclers. And I would imagine, I don't know, because I haven't talked to anyone in Williston Ave, but they would invite having this great access right across the street from their house to bike half.
Well, and how does this tie in with the safe routes to school? I mean, it seems like that's kind of a, a pretty, you know, it would be a significant tie-in here because it would give people coming from, you know, the Cottage and Union Streets areas a much safer way to get to the high school.
Yeah.
On bike. So.
Yeah.
You know, it's not, I, I don't know if that's, if that has funding implications at all or, you know, but I think just as far as the consideration of it, it makes a lot of sense.
Okay. I think that's great. And I mean, it's, again, it's hard because we don't know if we actually have funded for this part of it. But it's, I'm, I'm trying to think of this as like a little bit of a practice run. It's temporary and our complete streets plan asks for this to be permanent. Like a bike lane is permanent fixture on Williston Ave. And I feel like in theory, we could have applied to just go for a permanent one. But I really think it's worth trying it out as a practice run, see how it goes. And then, you know, I've talked to a couple of yous individually and around town, but the idea of getting people to the new school is really going to start to kind of ramp up. And this is kind of just a practice run, kind of just anything that we can do to get people going in that direction. Because if we can get people to Nanatac, you know, it's only a little bit further until they're at that school. And the, the, the best part of this, if it actually gets funded, would be that we have the Valley Bike Share too. So it would create an opportunity for people to hop on one of the Valley Bikes and just cruise up Williston. Like, is there, a lot of people are visitors and they don't really know where they're going. So we could kind of really promote that as a way to get to Williston, I mean, to Nanatac for, for people who are visiting.
I would say even just getting to Nanatac, if you try like during soccer season when there's so many cars, so much traffic going in, if you're trying to ride in there with your kid, it doesn't feel very safe.
Yeah.
That's like, I think, a great, great idea for park safely.
So would, um, does this committee have the ability to schedule a meeting on its own accord? Or do you have to go, do you have to get to a city council meeting to set a meeting? I just don't.
We can set a meeting.
Okay.
We can schedule a meeting.
Okay. So what I'm.
Even, even we can wait until a few days to see if they approve it and then schedule the meeting too.
Yeah, because we, you know, Omar and I talked, I mean, we almost like sent out the letter, but then it's, it's just premature. So I will let the committee know as soon as I hear something, whether this part was funded. And then, you know, I try to think optimistically. So if it gets funded, we could talk about some dates that gives the Williston Ave residents a chance to get the letter. And then like a reasonable amount of time before we have a meeting so people could try to make it.
Makes sense. Before you leave, Jeff, I have a question about something else. If we finish with this.
Yep, I'm, I'm, I'm okay. I appreciate it.
And any other, other consultants have any question about this? No? All right. So I'm going to move to the all businesses. One of them is about the, the parking, traffic and rules and orders. And I have a question for Jeff. I'm going to take him now. One of the parking and Union Street, I mean, one of the parking signs, sorry. And Union Street said, no parking anytime except Sunday. That parking sign, sign is in front of Big East and next to the church, the congressional church. And there, to me, doesn't make any sense because even on Sunday, it's going to, it's crazy if someone parked there. Do you have anything in your head why that parking sign is there and why they say no Sundays? I mean, allow Sundays to park there, sorry?
I mean, I do not. So my only guess would be if they're allowed to park on Sunday, would it be to accommodate people going to the church? Like, I don't know.
But if you see the map is, and if you, I mean, you, you, you're from East Hampton. Parking, even no, no one parked there on Sundays.
Yeah.
And if, for safety issue, I don't, I don't see why people should be parking in that area.
Right. Yeah, I think, I think that would make sense to me to, so you're saying you would prevent cars from parking there every day of the week? So, yeah. Yeah, I think that's fine. And, oh, sorry.
Just a clarification for a minute. It's in front of the Big East, Councilor Gomez?
Yes.
Oh, like right in between the two entrances to Big East?
See, I will show you in a second.
And I think in general, I mean, I think things with Union Street are going to change very substantially once we go. Construction, so. It's just the Sunday thing. It makes me just think of maybe there was a discussion with the church to provide parking, but it's on the opposite side, it sounds like.
Okay, let me see if you can see mine is exactly right here.
Okay. Yeah, I mean.
People come park there Sundays.
No one's going to park there. I mean, I'm just guessing. I, I bet it was probably like to support the church. So like, I don't know if they parked there on Sunday to bring stuff in and in advance of some, you know, in advance of a.
I live, I live near there and I never see anyone parking there and so.
It's a, it looks like a very dangerous spot. So if anything, it's just, doesn't look like it's an appealing place to park.
Yes. Yes. And the other thing that we briefly, briefly talked about it that was making all the signs all the same, like in, in Union Street, Cottage Street, Main Street. Now some of the parking signs said 60 minutes or they say 15 minutes. Others said 60 minutes, but no parking between this and this. So the, the reason that the President Konev presented this to the Public Safety was trying to do something with the parking and especially to do something easier for the, for the police department to make this easier to implement it and enforce for the police department. Because sometimes it's kind of confusing parking in Union and even in Union Street in some areas that we don't have any signs about parking. So people can park there all, all they want because we don't see any parking there. And then when you go to Cottage Street, it's different rules about it. And then when you go to Union, to, sorry, to Main, it's exactly the same, like a different rules from every single street. And most of the, most of the businesses that we have there, they're restaurants. So make more sense to make all the same kind of parking sign for all those streets.
Yeah. And I think it makes sense for consistency and for enforcement, it makes sense. And then if you're a visitor or a person coming, it's just, you know, it's like a best, that's definitely like a best practice is to make your parking regulations as consistent as you can. So it makes total sense.
Hey Omar, you know what? I think that church parking could be potentially a holdover from before they redid the, the intersection there. Because before, I don't know if you remember, but they didn't have any of those like little island things. And there was no turn arrow. It was crazy. So I think it was like maybe 10 or 15 years ago that redid that. So it might've made sense to be able to park there on Sundays when probably at that time and whenever that sign went up in like the 50s or whatever, like more people going to church, maybe? I don't know. So that's a good, good point.
Yeah, probably you're right. Let me see if I can find the picture so that way we can see it. I'm sorry, the internet here is not the best one. Because when I saw that and I took picture of it, I was like, this is, doesn't make any sense having this all here. So let's see if I can share.
I'm going to go out, I'm going to go out on Sunday and park there though.
I mean, now you're allowed.
Make sure you fold your mirrors in.
I know, it seems like.
No, I cannot share that, those pictures. But yes, we have that there and it's a sign that we should put just a no parking all the time. Because again, for safety reasons, I don't see anyone parking there on Sundays.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. And to the other counselors, after talking to Peg, the reason of reviewing the parking was that, to see all the parking signs. Because I guess a long time ago, probably a year ago, one of the residents from Holly was visiting Cottage Street and he was kind of confused with the parking signs. And, and he parked there all the time. Some days, the police enforced it. All the days, the police didn't enforce it. So he wanted something clear for him to, to park his car. So it's, it's something that I want to work with you guys because definitely we have to move this. We have this for a long time and, and our agenda. And it's, and, and I think it's time to, to make a decision about this.
How do we move something like that forward, like getting all the signs removed or changed or?
I said, Jeff, want to look like I say, he want to say something.
I was going to try to hop off. I just got an email from Councilor Kozinski saying that he couldn't get into that other meeting. I'm not in charge of that other meeting, but I'm going to try to hop off. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Okay. All right. What's that?
You're going to email me the grant proposal.
Yes. All right. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for me.
I see Jeff.
Thank you.
Hi Jeff.
Bye.
So.
Yes, I was thinking, I was thinking to make, even I have a conversation with, with the police department, with the chief. And I have a conversation with Nicole about if we change any of the parking sign, how much it's going to cost and if we have the money. She said that probably we can get the money from one of the grants money that we're going to get. And the idea was trying to do something like this. And this is the idea that I was talking to the police department and Nicole. There was like do something like all the, all the parking, like similar to 60 minutes. Except, let me find a picture. Like an hour, to me, make more sense. And this is my conversation with, with the police chief, 90 minutes. Because if you go into a restaurant and especially Thursday afternoon and you want to, you have to wait. You could wait for 10 minutes and then one hour to eat while you ordered food and, and eat and pay the bills and whatever. And then you can move. I think 90 minutes were reasonable. But again, when I, when I told Nicole about the 90 minutes, she was like, I don't know if we're going to have the money to put all those new signs in Pleasant, I mean, in Union, Cottage and Unit, and, and Main Street. So, I mean, that was my idea, not the idea of the committee. I was trying to get something from the, from Nicole and the police department before coming to this meeting. But definitely both Nicole and the police department agreed that we should have something consistent in all, in all, in Union, Cottage and Main Street. They, they all agree that we should do something consistently in all three.
So, so one of the things that we should also, as we think about, like, it might be a little premature at this moment to think about times. But like thinking about into the future, because when old, when the Old Town Hall.
I don't know if you get, can you read it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, except Sunday between eight and one.
Definitely seems like a church situation.
Yeah. So, um, but when Old Town Hall fires up, like, we're going to want people to go eat at a restaurant before they go see a show, you know? So if we're looking at one hour, that might be, unless we're ending at six. You know, I mean, my, so we've had this on, you know, I've been in this committee for a while. So I think this, this is a holdback from the last term, I'm pretty sure. And, you know, so one of the things I thought that I was thinking is like, there's, there's spaces in town where it would make sense where you want more turnover. So you would have a shorter amount of time for people to park, like say in front of Antonio's or whatever. You know, so one hour or 90 minutes. And then there's probably places in town where you'd want a little bit longer term so people could have time to, you know, go to a restaurant and browse through stores, go walk down to the, the boardwalk. So instead of just having.
Longer time, you think in about probably two hours?
Yeah. So what I was thinking, I was like, maybe you could have certain areas that would be short-term and then certain areas that would be longer term strategically based. And, and just have one sign that says, you know, spaces two through 12 are one hour and the other ones are two hours or something. Because right now we have 15 different signs. They say 15 different things.
Yes, I, I know Lindsay, you want to say something, but just one second. Like in, in front of La Veracruzana, we have one sign saying one hour parking, right? Except Sundays and holidays. And then, and then you go to Cottage Street and said, one hour parking, 5:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So they put a time limit, like 5:00 AM to 6:00 PM and then including Sundays and holiday. So it's getting crazy.
Yeah. I mean, I think we agree we need consistency. I, I think it would make sense that any kind of parking restrictions would end at six because you, so you wouldn't even have to worry about dinner time or anything like that. I also think though that you could have like a consistent time for on-street parking, that's 90 minutes. But then if people wanted to go longer and go to shops and stuff, they should park at City Hall where they could, that's long-term parking. I mean, I think the streets themselves should stay between certain hours. I mean, this is just my brainstorming, but I just feel like between seven and six or whatever, 90-minute parking, longer-term parking, go to City Hall or other municipal lots.
So now, so the only question that I have now is with the 74 Cottage Street, with the cannabis store there. There's 74 Cottage Street, there's the cannabis.
The cannabis provisions?
Well, the cannabis provisions, yeah.
So, um, so because it's in Cottage Street. So we should think about only that business? Or we should, when we make a decision, we should make a decision in all that area?
Probably the whole area.
The whole area, right?
Yeah. And, and, you know, I think one of the things that we'll need to do is we'll need to pull in some of the business owners that are on Cottage and Union and, and get their opinion, get their thoughts. Like, they might have a, you know, some sort of thought that we just, you know, not on our radar. So, and we also probably want to talk to the DPW just to, I mean, now there's a new director. I mean, this is something that we had asked them last time and they, we just didn't get really an answer. Because if we can, if we can have an idea of what the signs are going to cost of it. Because if we can, if we can have an idea of what the signs are gonna cost, I, I bet Nicole would have an easier time giving us an answer whether they'd actually get bought.
So what about making, I mean, and this is my idea, you guys also have to agree with me. Making Main, both sides, or maybe only, yeah, because we have Main, Union and Cottage Street, 90 minutes from 7:00 to 7:00.
I could, I even think 6:00 is fine because if you go to dinner at 5:00 or 6:00, you don't ever want to, just, I don't know. I think 6:00 is the usual time.
Yes, I was thinking about 7:00. I'm gonna give you a sample. I don't drink alcohol, right? And probably if we have something big at Brasket. So people are gonna use those, those parking before 7:00. So usually people go to dinner between 5:00 and 7:00. So, and that's why I was bringing the 7:00, like a, like a, like an hour. So after 7:00, if you want to go to Brasket and leave your car more than two hours there, 90 minutes there, I'm fine with it. But if I'm going at 6:00 PM with my family to eat dinner at 6:00 PM at Pissara, probably I couldn't find parking that day because Brasket have something. That doesn't, the only reason, the, the only reason I'm, I'm bringing 7:00 to 7:00.
I, I, like Councilor Derby said, I don't think we need to come up with the particulars of this. Like, I feel like it is something that we have to open up to the, the business community.
Yes, no, and, and I, I may agree with, with him, but I want to bring something to them. Like something, like any idea of, hey, what about, what about this? You guys, this sound good to you guys? And, and bring it to the, to the business owners, like, hey, we're working this in this committee. What about doing this and this? I, I can't even bring like a 6:00 to 6:00 too and see what they said about it. But yeah, I agree.
I think for time, it's definitely gonna be going to the business owners for-
Okay.
The time is, yeah. And I, and I think another, another thing is enforcement. Because we have to be a little bit, I mean, it's, it's fine, like, we know how enforcement goes. But it might make sense to ask Bob, like, you know, when do the shifts switch? Like, is it realistic for us to expect them to be looking at parking at this time to this time? And so there's that piece too.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
But other than that, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a good time to have the conversation, especially with Union Street coming on, you know, coming online potentially in the next, you know, 12 to 18 months, hopefully. That project starting, that should, because if, that might even include signs.
Yes.
So that, if we could, if we could dovetail that in, we wouldn't have to worry about paying for them.
So we should, so we should individually talk to the business owners or we should invite them? I can send a letter, a letter to them, an inviter, invite them to our next meeting.
I think, yeah, sending a letter out to all the Main, Union and Cottage Street, that's a lot of letters, but-
Yeah, but I can do that.
Emails.
Yeah, emails, yeah.
Yeah, when I say letters, yeah, that's, emails-
Typing their emails, like hits them.
Do you have other emails? I can-
No, I do not.
I have some from when I, when, when I was like, read from when I went canvassing about plastic bags. I collect a lot of emails, so I'll see what I have with that.
Yes, please share that with me so that way we can send a letter to them.
Awesome.
Right. So I'm gonna move, anything else you're gonna want to talk about parking?
Well, I was just gonna say, as far as the process of it, parking is in traffic rules and orders. I believe it, it's part of the ordinances, so we would just need to have a public hearing. Any traffic, any, any parking changes.
Okay. Yes, let's start inviting the business owner, the chief and Nicole to our next meeting to talk about it. And then we make a decision about that. And so now I'm gonna move to the residents pleading concerns. You remember that I was saying that I'm gonna sit down with, with Peg about creating the committee? So her recommendation, and I think she was right, is letting the BPW take actions. You know, they know exactly what they have to do. She recommend me to be part of most of their meetings to push them as much as I can to work with theirs every time. And that way we can remove it from our agenda without, without prejudice.
Sounds good.
Okay, so, and the pedestrian safety review, I think we should, we should do the same. Because I, I guess BPW and DPW should be in charge of that. And you see what happened with, with Jeff about creating more crosswalks in, in our city. So I think the city planner, the BPW and DPW are really taking care of these concerns and they're working on it. And I think it's time for us to remove it and, and without prejudice. And then in the, in the future, we have to bring it back, we, at any time we, we can bring it back. We're definitely are gonna be part of that, those meetings as much as I can. Because usually sometime they, they schedule the meeting the same time that we have other meetings. But I'm gonna talk to the chairman and I think he's really reasonable. I think he's gonna try to reschedule this meeting or move it to another day or something like that. So that I can be part of those meetings and start working more aggressively with those issues in, in our city. If you guys are agreed, I, I'm, I'm more than happy to take a motion to remove pedestrian safety review and residents pleading concern from our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to remove pedestrian safety review and residents pleading concerns. Any further discussion? No? Seven, Councilor Derby?
Yes.
Councilor Rothschild?
Yes.
And Omar Gomez say yes, 3 to 0, motion passed. I don't have anything else in our agenda, anything new that you guys want to said or something?
Enjoy your time in Puerto Rico. It looks amazing.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys. So we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, you did.
We have a motion, a second to adjourn. Councilor Derby?
Yes.
Councilor Rothschild?
Yes.
And I say yes, see you guys.
All right, take care, guys.
Bye, nos vemos.
You're okay to spread them.
Bye.